And welcome to the January 11th, 2019, meeting for the City Council, February 11th. Welcome to our work session.
And I'm opening the work session for the joint meeting for E-Web and starting at 5:30.
Okay, I'm just gonna take two seconds, a couple of introductions and a couple of rules. I'm gonna ask you to introduce yourselves because I realize the name tags actually aren't that user-friendly for those of you around the table. So just quickly, so we don't use up time, too much time, your name and E-Web or City Council association. So that'll start to my right.
Betty Taylor, City Council.
John Brown, E-Web, wards four and five.
Mike Clark, Council Ward Five.
Mindy Schlossberg, E-Web, at-large.
Chris Pryor, Eugene, Council Ward Eight.
Jennifer Yeh, Eugene Council, Ward Four.
Frank Lawson, E-Web General Manager.
Ethan Nelson, Intergovernmental Relations Manager, City of Eugene.
John Reese, City Manager in Eugene.
Claire Syret, City Council, Ward Seven.
Dick Helgason, E-Web, Wards Two and Three.
Greg Evans, Betty's Bodyguard.
That's a very good job.
I'm Steve Nuttall, E-Web's Ward One and Eight.
Emily Semple, City Council, Ward One.
Sonya Carlson, Ward Six and Seven.
And Lucy Venice, Mayor. And I'm hearing, understanding my mic is not working. Is it working?
I hear you, but I can't stop the mic.
Does it work?
Yeah, it doesn't sound like it's working.
Well, can we? Oh, we'll share. We will share. Okay. All right. So just a quick plan. The plan is we have a staff presentation first for 20 minutes or so, is my understanding. And then we'll, Sonya and I will each keep a queue for our respective organizations. And we'll do as we did before, because there are twice as many, two city councilors, and then followed by E-Web Commissioner back and forth in the first round, and then the second round will be one-off. So your help to two minutes, and we'll just keep a queue. So folks, let us know if you want to speak. And with that, I turn it over to staff.
Great. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Venice, City Council, and E-Web Commissioners. Again, I'm Ethan Nelson, the City's Intergovernmental Relations Manager, and that includes oversight of the city's climate and sustainability policy efforts. Tonight, we have a great set of brief presentations scheduled for you, and ideally plenty of time for question and answer. Excuse me. I will provide a short overview of the city's climate recovery ordinance and action planning efforts, followed by E-Web General Manager Frank Lawson to discuss smart electrification, and with Juan Serpa Munoz and Matt Rodriguez to discuss electric vehicle programs, and with a wrap-up by Jason Huser on a statewide carbon cap and trade policy being worked on currently at the Capitol. There are four key messages that I'd like to convey. The first is Eugene is a leader in addressing the climate challenge. As you can see, the City Council has continually set the tone and vision for climate action over the past decade. As we saw in the climate journey, Council adopted the Climate Recovery Ordinance referred to as the CRO in 2014 and updated it in 2016. Eugene is one of the first communities in the world to adopt a science-based greenhouse gas emissions reduction goal. These two goals on the screen are the two primary drivers for updating the community-wide climate action plan. The second key message is Eugene has a track record that shows community commitment to environmental stewardship. As many have heard me say in the past, Eugene's clean energy economy stems from legacy decisions and public investments over the past century, starting with the development of a publicly-owned water and electric utility and the opportunities that came from that community decision. That community commitment has extended through investments in public transit, clean energy, and energy conservation, multimodal transportation options, and a strong natural foods economy, to name a few. This commitment shows as we rank low on our per capita sector-based emissions comparative to other U.S. cities, which you can see there on the left of the screen. My apology for your handouts, and the next two slides should be flipped in order. But the commitment, the community commitment extends to our current efforts at updating our climate action plan to create a Eugene Climate Collaborative that is designed to be a platform for continued systematic understanding of policy and investments across our community. Two key actors in this collective impact model are our two agencies, and you can see a number of the other agencies that are involved in our Eugene Climate Collaborative. The third key message is we are in a time of opportunity to take large action to meet the adopted goals. In our climate planning, E-Web and the city have the opportunity to positively impact the two main sector-based buckets of emissions, those from buildings and transportation. As you can see, in addition to the projected reduction actions by the Eugene Climate Collaborative members, over the next 10 years, we have a gap of roughly 450,000 metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalent to meet the CRO goals. And on the left is our 2017 emissions, what a business as usual, the BAU, would incorporate, what our 2030 forecast is, and then those emissions reductions from the various Eugene Climate Collaborative partners, and then the gap all the way on the far right. The fourth takeaway is the populations most impacted by the effects of the changing climate are those populations that are the least able to adapt to these conditions. It is the reason why the city has developed a climate equity plan panel to provide input, and the reason why E-Web has incorporated equity considerations into your climate policies. The plans and investments we all take need to not only address the future conditions for our community, but also address the inequities which many in the community currently experience. Lastly, we are forging ahead with our climate action planning efforts with the focus towards this summer to wrap up the work and move towards programming at the household and individual level. There would be an opportunity for more questions later on, and at this, I'll turn it on over to Frank for a smart electrification discussion.
Councilors, Commissioners, good evening. Is my mic working? Okay. So, good evening. There's a few things that I wanted to run through this evening having to do with the electric sector and how we approach issues such as decarbonization. I'll walk through some of those complexities and some of the impacts so that we can get to a point where Juan and Jason can talk about some of the specifics that we're pursuing as an organization. There are a number of areas that we have to look at across the economy relative to decarbonizing. These are sometimes referred to as the four pillars of decarbonization. Historically, E-Web has worked in, very specifically, in a couple of those areas. One is around the resource decisions that we make relative to the source of electricity, low-carbon electricity specifically in this case. Over the next couple of years, we are going to be working on our integrated resource plan, which will set policy for the next round of decisions relative to resources. The other one on the left has to do with the ongoing work, and in fact, E-Web's been historically a leader in both energy conservation as well as energy efficiency. We are looking at expanding this into a couple of other areas, including electrification, as well as looking at our own operations. A number of studies have been pursued recently relative to the impact of decarbonizing on the electric sector in specific. Some of these were done by an organization called E3. Over the last year or so, we have looked at economy-wide. One of those will actually be reported because it was part of some work that they did for Northwest Natural, looking at a multi-sector impact of what's called the Pathways Study in the Northwest. The other were, the other two were specific to the electric sector. One looked at the cost of decarbonizing, and the other looked at the reliability associated with decarbonizing. And we'll talk about those in more detail as we go along. There were a few common conclusions out of all of these studies. The first was that we think that it is technically possible to reach the 80% below 1990 levels in the electric sector. We think it's also relatively practical to get there, and so we have the technology and we have the ability. And I think that's, that's good news as far as our particular sector. We also recognize that probably the best approach to getting there is some type of an economy-wide carbon policy. It is more technology-neutral as opposed to picking a winning technology such as an extension of the RPS, or saying it's all about solar, it's all about wind. This is more about an economy-wide approach. All of the studies required some kind of deep decarbonizing of the transportation sector. It's critical that we look at that sector if we want to decarbonize the entire economy, and all those studies led to that same conclusion. And then finally, we, we realized that both for cost and for reliability, we ultimately need a mix of energy sources. And I don't necessarily mean the technology itself, but a mix of the profile. Mother Nature will dispatch certain types of resources differently than others, and so we eventually need a mix. And to get to that 80% level, we need much deeper work in energy efficiency and conservation. We also need to expand our renewables and also look at some kind of dispatchable fuel which is used from time to time for reliability. Presently, the most cost-effective source for that is natural gas. Couple of key points about electricity. It is a regional issue. In fact, 30% of the electricity consumed in the state of Oregon comes from coal. It's a little bit hard to understand that because we only have one coal plant, but when you look at the total consumption, a lot of that comes from Montana and Wyoming and Utah. And so we have to really look at this issue as a regional one, as, and this is actually a list of, of all the various generating resources throughout the West. And this is a very integrated grid, and so all the electrons mix together. There's no such thing as a green electron, or a yellow electron, or a black electron. They all do eventually mix. The other one is that time of use does matter relative to the carbon content. And so one of the things that you can see is that we are winter-peaking utility, as is most utilities in the Northwest. So December, January, and February, we require the most energy, and then certain times of the day, we require the most energy. That energy at peak is the most carbon intense. Even when you look out into some of the future, when we decarbonize down to that 80% below 1990 levels, the difference between peak and off-peak from a carbon intensity perspective is significant. It's a number of factors. It's not percentages at that point. The other thing that I wanted to point out is there's a difference between peak and average. This is something that utilities make investments based on peak. And so the best analogy that I heard on that was you cannot fly through the mountains at average altitude. We, we recognize that we make investments, both in infrastructure and in resource, based on what we need when we need it. If you look at the build-out required to meet the 80% reduction by 1990 levels, and you look at 2050, what you're gonna see is our peak in the Northwest at that time is gonna be around 52 gigawatts. So those of you who watched Back to the Future when they talked about gigawatts, well, this is, this is gigawatts at this point. To meet that peak, we need to procure resources totaling 118 gigawatts. And so it's a combination of a number of things. Wind and solar play a significant role in that, as does hydro. We are blessed in the Northwest to have access to a federal resource of the Columbia River, which is both a great storage mechanism as well as a carbon-free resource. And then also, there is a role for natural gas in this equation as well. But what I will point out is there's a difference between peak and average. When you average out how these resources are actually run over the course of a year, you'll see that natural gas, for example, while it's, has the capacity to run at 24 gigawatts, the average over the course of year is only four. And so while we build to peak, how we operate those depends on what's needed and when. We're building out a lot of renewables. However, we recognize that renewables are dispatched by Mother Nature. And so on years where there's low hydro, no wind, and not a lot of sun, we need to have the capability to meet those peaks under all of those circumstances, even though we might not run all these resources at exactly the same time we'll run them when they're most economically feasible to run. That's why gas only runs 16% of the time in this Finally, I'll kind of lead you through eventually what we start to look at when we, when we mean smart electrification. It's based on characteristics. So we look for opportunities to look across the entire life cycle and the benefits. We recognize that there's fugitive emissions, there's efficiency of transfer that you have to look at. You have to look at things such as conversion of energy, there's losses in transmission. You have to look at the benefits across the entire cycle. We also, as we mentioned earlier, there's issues and differences between whether we're building on our peak or not. And so we look and say smart electrification will probably not automatically add to the peak. One of the ways to mitigate that is what we call demand response, which are mechanisms to get the consumption to move around when it's most beneficial. Demand response is gonna be essential to integrating renewable resources into the entire mix. Finally, we recognize, there's a couple of things. A TBL statement recognizes that these opportunities have to be available across our entire customer base, but also we have to take affordability into account. If we want people to electrify, we need to make sure we're not pricing ourselves out of the market and out of those decisions. So there is a balance here with cost. And then finally, there's a recognition that customer choice is important here. We recognize that consumer preference plays a role in a lot of these decisions. And so when we look at what becomes the most smart, things that jump to the surface, conservation and energy efficiency needs a lot more investment and a lot further focus, no matter what the energy resource is, whether you're talking about gas, electricity, automobiles, energy efficiency and conservation is a really critical piece to that. Transportation in this is one of the areas that we look at, and Juan will talk about this more in a second. That's one that's really, really important for, for society to electrify further. And then the demand response. Industrial and water heating will tend to be case by case. You'll have to look at efficiency transfers. We see the most challenging one up here to be just a raw conversion from natural gas to electricity. It's different if you're talking about efficiency measures along with that, but to just fuel switch from one to the other is, is not, it's a marginal carbon benefit. It will cause us to have significant investment in our system. It'll be harder to integrate from a renewables perspective. And so when you look at the regionalization, the time of use, and the fact that it starts to also impinge upon customer choice, I think it's one that we look at and say it might not be smart electrification. It might be less smart electrification in that particular area at this point in time. So, so with that, I'll pass it off to Matt and Juan to talk specifically about electric vehicles and electrification
Good evening, Commissioners and Council. My name is Juan Serpa Munoz, and I'm the Business Line Manager on the Electrification side for Eugene Water and Electric Board. I'm gonna talk to you about E-Web transportation and electrification efforts. The first slide is looking at trends, and we can see that exponential forecast in 2025 taking place. And taking a look at a more regional level, we can see that in E-Web service territory, in 2016, we had 321 electric vehicles. That number jumped in 2017 to 403. And in the first six months of 2018, and again, this is only the first six months, we went to 744. In Q2, we will have the rest of the numbers for 2018. Looking at one of our programs that we have for electric vehicles, which is the Clean Ride Rebate, we see that in 2017, we had 14 participants, and 2018, we had 77. That's quite a jump. But as we look at January 2019, and just that month, we had 24. So clearly, the adoption is coming to this area as well as on the national level. This is supported also by commitments from the industry, including General Motors, which is offering 20 electric vehicle models by 2023, but also other investments such as from the VW settlement that is providing support and funding for the infrastructure for electric vehicles on the charging infrastructure for electric vehicles nationally, but also to Oregon. So why electric vehicles? About 39% of greenhouse gases in Oregon come from the transportation sector. So it makes it a critical component of any carbon reduction strategy. There's also health benefits through the reduction of an exhaust emissions, and this addresses the equity piece because a lot of vulnerable communities tend to live around highways and freeways. Cost savings, about 75% reduction from fueling costs and less maintenance, and this brings a point for us to maintain, continue to be competitive in our pricing to continue to offer that value to our customers. The next point, flexibility of charging, this is one of the key benefits about electric vehicles, that we're able to shift that load to move it to when clean power is available. And that is a critical component of smart electrification, which is a point that the presentation of Frank was speaking on. So it brings triple bottom-line benefit to our community, sectors, and industries. Our current programs and efforts that we have include incentives, loans, and education. For example, the Eugene, that rev-up Eugene, excuse me, the rev-up Eugene partnership that we have with the University of Oregon and the City of Eugene. And that's an educational program where we provide workshops to attendees, and those who attend also qualify for additional incentives from E-Web when buying or leasing an electric vehicle, and also from dealerships that participate in this program. I mentioned partnerships because this is really a team effort, and we are part of a coalition, an electrification coalition, where we work with other utilities and entities in the region to move forward these efforts on electrification, including transportation. On the new programs and efforts that we're looking at is, has to do with charging. Because we, electric vehicles have the ability to shift that load, we want to emphasize having equipment that allows the customers to make the choice and find it easy to shift that load to when clean power is available. Electric vehicles continue to be, it's challenging to have certain technologies reach all the customer sectors. And when we look at our programs, we try to not only make them available, but also accessible. And so with electric vehicles and trying to have them reach limited-income communities, we are looking at a pilot call, the car-sharing pilot program, where we're gonna work with limited-income housing agencies, and also entities like Envoy to bring car-sharing to these communities. The question was asked, what if we had 25,000, 50,000, or 75,000 vehicles, electric vehicles, excuse me, by 2020, 2030? On the energy side, it's not that much of an impact. It would be about a 10%, and we can procure that energy easily.
Juan, adventure.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. So looking at that graph, on the energy side, it would be about a 10% increase. So that is manageable, and we can procure that energy. The consideration of the challenge really comes from peak. So say, for example, everybody decides to come at home at 5:00 or 6:00, and they decide to charge at that time. So you can see the peak almost being greater than twice as much. And that's when clean power would no longer be available. And that would be the challenge for us, not only as to when we're charging, but also where. Because depending where this is taking place within our territory, we may not have that capacity. So we're looking at having to invest in the electric system. With the right strategies and programs, we can address that and shift that peak to take place during times when clean power is available. And it's easy for the customer to be able to do this with the controls already embedded in electric vehicles. And so electric vehicles makes it a very important component of smart electrification. And this is something, again, with the right strategy, that E-Web can handle. And time is on our side. So we're able to create programs and address this, look at what is coming, and maximize the benefits of electric vehicles while addressing the challenges that can come in. And this is, again, a team effort, so we work with power planning and our transmission and distribution teams also to make sure that we have a solution that works for the utility and for our customers, impacting E-Web, but also not having a negative, negative, excuse me, impact on the region. Lastly, thank you. This is a little slide from the far side on early experience in transportation. I especially liked the data guy collecting the information. Thank you very much.
So, good evening, Council and Commissioners. I'm Matt Rodriguez. I'm the City Engineer for the City of Eugene, and I have a concise update on where we are with developing an electric vehicle strategy for the city. As you saw in attachment E of the Council Packet, we're in the process of developing the strategy, but getting close to having something for you to review. We've contracted with lane council of governments to perform a research project into policy and strategies to bolster adoption of electric vehicles. We also had them do a series of interviews with key stakeholders across the state, University of Oregon, El Rapa, State of Oregon, you know, different folks, and, and E-Web being a major one that we're working with. And I've also had quite a few conversations with Juan recently, and as you can tell from his presentation, he is a real resource in our area for how to move forward in electrification of vehicles. We expect to have an update as part of the Community Climate Action Plan, frequent updates that you get before council break, that we can talk more about at a future work session.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilors, Commissioners. I'm Jason Huser with E-Web, and this evening, I'll be giving you an update on the status of legislation in Salem that would cap and reduce greenhouse gas emissions to meet an 80% reduction by 2050. I'll save that slide for a second. The first thing I want to tell you is, in Salem, this is not a drill. There's been a cap and trade or carbon tax bill proposed as far back as the 2001 legislative session. Not a single bill in the past has even made it out of committee. This year is going to be very different, I believe. Primarily, this legislation's a heavy lift, but you've got buy-in from the highest levels of leadership in Salem. I've never seen this level of buy-in and alignment between the governor, the Speaker of the House, the Senate President, super majorities, Democratic super majorities in both the House and Senate that have identified this as a key priority for them. And then finally, not least of all, the people of Oregon. I've been really impressed at the level of citizen involvement on this legislation. There was a rally last week. There's a lot of familiar faces here in the room tonight that I saw in the Capitol last week. So that's absolutely having a big impact as well. Wanted to give you a quick snapshot of existing policies in the state of Oregon to reduce carbon. We've got some things to hang our hat We've got some things to hang our hat on in Oregon. We've done a lot to deploy clean energy, to promote energy efficiency. We have some things to be proud of, but as you can see, you know, we're hardly making a dent as far as creating that downward trajectory to the 80% by 2050 target. So an additional policy is required. And as we evaluate how we get from where we are today to get to 2050, it's clear that cap and trade is the frontrunner at this point in Salem. Cap and trade is both very complicated, but also rather elementary at the same time. These are some of the more elementary concepts in cap and trade. Cap and trade is sometimes described as being akin to creating a carbon diet or a carbon budget for the state of Oregon, deciding how much carbon we can afford to emit and still meet our 80% target by 2050. There are allowances that are issued in a cap and trade program. An allowance is essentially a permit to emit one ton of carbon into the atmosphere in a given year. The amount of allowances in the program decline over time, resulting in declining emissions. Anyone who has a compliance obligation can respond in three ways to the program. They can purchase allowances in an auction. They can trade for them in a secondary market. They may receive free allowances from the state of Oregon in some instances as a cost mitigation tool. And finally, they can decide they don't need an allowance at all, and they can just reduce their carbon emissions. There's a couple of reasons why E-Web thinks carbon pricing in a cap and trade bill is the best approach as a policy. Number one, it's the least cost approach. Frank addressed that in a few slides already. It's clear that a market approach is very good at picking out efficiencies to get to the least cost carbon abatement strategies. It's also technology neutral. As a utility that's heavily reliant on hydropower, that's very important to us, and I have a slide coming up on that. Thirdly, we're a consumer-owned utility. We have five elected commissioners, elected by the public. Local decision-making is very, very important to us. One of the things we like about the program is, unlike some other strategies, the state's not dictating in any way what compliance options or what emission strategies E-Web would employ. Those decisions remain in the hands of the elected board. That's important to us. And having worked at the City of Eugene many years ago, I know local control is equally important to you. Finally, regional linkage is an important component of cap and trade legislation. If Oregon can link to other cap and trade programs in the region, for example, our neighbor to the south of us, California has a program in place already. There are cap and trade proposals in Washington State under consideration. If those programs can link together, we could end up with a consistent carbon price throughout the West. That would be important to help reduce economic leakage, which is important. We don't want to simply have a policy that chases jobs or emissions across state borders with no actual net carbon reduction. So having a consistent carbon price in the region could be very instrumental in reducing economic leakage. And finally, you know, Oregon is doing this to address a global problem. We're leading relatively from the bottom up if we decide to go forward with this as a state. Now, Oregon's emissions are pretty small on a global scale, so that's not going to be sufficient. The idea is, if enough, you know, states can lead, we can link together and create a momentum that will lead to a national program, and then to a global program. And, you know, Oregon's emissions are very small, but Oregon can do its share and make a difference. And just like I vote in elections, not because my vote alone makes a difference, it makes a difference along with, you know, millions of other voters. It's the same idea. Oregon can do its share and hopefully prompt action in the future at the national and global level. I won't spend a lot of time on this slide, because Frank alluded to this already. This is a slide from the E3 low-carbon analysis. And as you can see here, there's a really big difference in the cost effectiveness of carbon pricing, which here, you can see it moving from west to east. One, carbon pricing gets you to an 80% reduction, does so with existing technology, and you get twice the emission reductions at half the cost of an alternative strategy like a renewable portfolio standard. So if we're going to get to 80% by 2050 in the reduction, and still have a very healthy Oregon economy, it's pretty clear from this slide, we want to use direct carbon pricing. And I want to clarify, and this is not an indictment of renewable energy at all, we need more renewable energy than we have today if we're going to get to that 80% target. And in the carbon pricing scenario, there's going to be a lot of renewable energy built in the Northwest in order to get to that 80% reduction. We're simply saying, as a policy instrument, the renewable portfolio standard isn't effective to get us to the finish line. Probably a good policy at its inception in 2007 to change the trajectory somewhat, but to get to the finish line and do so with a healthy economy and the least cost, we've got to use direct carbon pricing. Real quickly, I just wanted to include this slide to illustrate why we care about carbon-neutral solutions. The Bonneville Power Administration has done some analysis on how different policies assign value to hydropower. And it's pretty clear to us that carbon-neutral solutions are good for a utility that relies on a resource like hydropower. You know, hydropower isn't really facing a level playing field relative to other energy sources. Hydropower doesn't receive any kind of incentive or subsidy that I can think of, and most other forms of energy do. So it's been a little bit of an unlevel playing field. We like the fact that in a technology-neutral approach like cap and trade, the only criteria that's being used is the carbon content of an energy source. Things like technology, fuel, age, the size of an energy resource, none of that matters. And when you have that level playing field, hydropower fares very well. So that's something we like about carbon pricing. So I'll wrap it up by pointing out, there's kind of three large areas that I think the legislature is still wrestling with in the design of the bill. The first one, revenue recycling. Revenue recycling is basically the idea that this program is going to collect revenue from Oregon's businesses, ratepayers, citizens, consumers. We want to ensure that that money is returned back to those folks to help them pay for carbon emission reduction measures. If you don't have revenue recycling, you effectively double the cost of the program. So revenue recycling is very important to help people pay the cost of reducing their carbon, or in the cases that they can't, mitigating cost increases. For example, to vulnerable Oregonians that are already struggling to pay energy bills or generally stay afloat in our current economy. Revenue recycling will be somewhat challenging in the transportation sector. We have some requirements in the Oregon Constitution about how those funds can be spent if they're collected from fuel suppliers. So you may, if you read the bill, it's about a 90-page bill, so make a big hot cup of tea before you do that. It doesn't have a lot of detail in the transportation sector. That's probably because they're leaving a placeholder open to address a lot of the design for transportation and rulemaking, because there are some unknowns on the Oregon Constitution. And if we find out later, after the bill's been passed, we can't do things a certain way in Oregon, they'll want to have the ability to go back in rulemaking and make adjustments. I already talked about regional linkage, so I won't say a lot about it, other than we're trying to make sure we stick the landing with California. I think Oregon's checked a few high-level boxes that are necessary to link to California, so we're just in some details now. And finally, I think there is this last question over how much do we want to see delegated to rulemaking in the bill or actually spelled out in the legislation? I've talked to a number of folks in California that have said, it's probably going to make sense to handle quite a few things in rulemaking. You want to have a high-level outline that gives a lot of different industries and different stakeholder groups some certainty about what compliance we like for them in the legislation. But there are just details that are so complex, you really need a year to a year and a half to iron them out properly. So I believe the legislation today does have that high-level outline. There'll be a little more tinkering, but there's going to be a lot of work left to do in the rulemaking process. And I can wrap it up there and take any questions if they're necessary.
All right. Thank you all very much, and really appreciate the expertise that E-Web brings to the table as the city council is grappling with how to realize our goals in our climate recovery ordinance. So appreciate this partnership and feel inspired by some of the things I just heard. So I'm taking a cue. Are there councilors who wish to ask questions or speak to what they've heard yet? If not, I'm going to let the, oh, there we go. Mike, take it away.
I tried to let everybody, let's go first on that one. Thank you, Mayor. I have just a couple of questions. Number one, a lot of this stuff, the initial baseline pieces of the discussion here are about the two most, the two buckets of highest use in consumption and transportation. It occurs to me that those are per capita-based sorts of measurements. And even with our CRO discussions previously, I'm surprised that it didn't occur to me to ask this question, but from which source do we derive our population forecasts when we create these models?
Counselor Clark, so if I understand correctly, the population estimates are going to come from PSU population forecasts, is my understanding?
Same ones we used with land use issues planning?
Correct.
Okay, awesome. That's number one. Number two, if the state does pass cap and trade, how much of Eugene's CRO goals will be no longer necessary to be met? In other words, how far will that effort get us to our climate goals and thus change our plans? Can anybody answer that question?
Counselor Clark, in regard to, I think at our last update, there was a slide on the gaps strategies. And in that, it was estimated that the, a statewide, economy-wide cap and trade would, could have, you know, estimates and the assumptions go within them, roughly, I think, a range of around 400,000 metric tons of reduction. And that would apply, then, to our
Isn't that the size of the gap?
The size of the sector-based gap is about 450,000 tons per year. And so it would be, it would come pretty close to addressing some of that sector-wide. But the question is, and I'd have to go back to our consultants, is whether that 400,000 tons is a sector-based or a consumption-based.
I'd really like to know how far along that gets us and whether any other strategies are necessary after they pass that. Thank you.
Emily.
Thank you. These are our two basic questions that I'm a little embarrassed to ask, but maybe other people don't know. Can you explain fairly simply cap and trade and carbon pricing?
I'd be happy to answer that. I apologize if I use them somewhat interchangeably. Carbon pricing is simply the idea that we address an economic externality, which is right now, anyone can emit carbon into the atmosphere and there's no cost, even though we know there's some environmental costs. It's the idea that this economic externality would now have a price on it, would no longer be an externality. And there's really two primary variants of carbon pricing. They both accomplish kind of the same goal of putting that price on carbon, a carbon tax and a cap and trade. They essentially do the same thing, put that price on carbon.
Can you give more of an example? So like when you talk about externality, I'm not sure what you mean by that. So can you give an example of what that actually means?
Sure. Right now, there's zero cost to use the atmosphere and emit carbon into the airshed for, there's no cost whatsoever. So in the example of cap and trade, it's a policy that's capping emissions. It's not setting the price. The market will set the price, but one way or the other, there will be a price in cap and trade. In California, so far, I believe the price has been around $15 per ton. Other states have picked a price certainty mechanism, like British Columbia, they have a carbon tax. So they don't have certainty on how many tons of carbon they'll emit, but they have certainty on the price. I believe they started out at $15, and it increased over time. I think they're up to $20 per ton today. So those would be two variants of carbon pricing. And I'm sorry if I use them interchangeably. Cap and trading and carbon tax are both forms of carbon pricing.
So basically, the more pollution you make, you have to pay kind of a fine for it? That's a tax or something? Is there a certain amount you can emit without paying anything? Or do you pay for every little speck?
Yes, I apologize, I glossed over the threshold in the state of Oregon. The Oregon policy primarily targets large emitters, those that emit over 25,000 tons annually. So the list of covered entities in the policy, I believe it's less than 100 entities that would be covered, largely utilities, transportation fuel suppliers, some large manufacturing facilities, and landfills. So they're not targeting small businesses. Your favorite local Eugene brewery will not face any direct carbon pricing, although, you know, businesses and consumers may feel indirect impacts as some of those covered entities ultimately pass some of the carbon costs downstream in the economy.
So if you're rich enough, or you can charge enough money, you can keep on emitting all this carbon? And the hope is that by costing more, you'll stop emitting so much carbon?
Well, in a cap and trade, that is true. The program does not stop any individual person from emitting carbon. If any entity seeks to acquire the carbon allowance, which is a permit to emit that one ton of carbon, they may do so. I think the effectiveness of the program comes from that, the amount of allowances issued each year will decline over time. So it is a hard cap. So no matter what any individual person might do, as a state, emissions would reduce over time, because the amount of permits circulated annually would decline over time. It is a hard cap and would provide certainty that the state of Oregon would meet specified emission reduction goals.
So how would you decide who got to use more carbon if you had a hard cap?
Counselor Semple, what I would think about it is that in our bucket slide in regards to transportation and buildings, and so if we think about buildings, there's going to be power that's going to be coming from, or energy source is going to come from Northwest Natural or E-Web, in our service territory at least. Those two will be, those two entities would then be regulated under a cap and trade, and they would set allowances and set targets as to what level of carbon would be emitted. And therefore, there would be like a, and therefore, there would be a price on that. And so that would be then transferred to the consumer, and ideally, then either the energy source would become more cleaner over time, or, and/or that price will then be transferred to the individual consumer, and that would then be a price signal for changing from one source to another. And similarly, with transportation fuels in the transportation bucket, those will be economy-wide, and they would trickle down to each individual consumer.
The money from the tax would, I think you already told me, but where is it going?
So the funds, and as Jason had explained, is the funds from that would be going on into statewide distribution. And one of the great things about the bill and in previous iterations of it, has really been a focus on getting that money back into what's called impacted communities. And that impacted communities would be really targeted towards equity communities, so.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Brown?
Well, thank you very much for the presentation. A couple of quick questions, if I may, about your EV strategy update. And it says, two of the things that are there, about 50% EVs by 2030, and autonomous vehicles. I'm pretty sure everybody around this table has heard about 5G recently, and we've been hearing testimony that one of the major reasons 5G is being installed is to accommodate autonomous vehicles. Can you tell me how that plays into your plan? Is that your goal, is to allow that technology to accommodate autonomous vehicles? Or where is that in your discussion? I'm talking to the cities, I'm looking at Attachment E, it's the city's policy.
So I wouldn't say that adoption of 5G is a goal to prepare for automated vehicles. Right now, due to FCC rulings, we are basically required to allow 5G technology to be put into our into our right-of-way. We also are limited in the amount of money that we can charge the telecommunication companies that are putting this infrastructure in our right-of-way. So the FCC ruling really has tied the city's hands in a large part in how we regulate that. And there is -- there are lawsuits pending on that. As far as a strategy for EVs, we have a contract with University of Oregon Urbanism Next Group to look at how autonomous vehicles might change the way the transportation system works to try and understand where we go from here. I will say, talking with the State Office of Innovation and their advisor on AV and EV technology, as well as major auto manufacturers, there is a sense that this is not an AV, massive AV adoption is not as near-term as everyone talks about, that really major automakers are not talking about any of that technology rolling out until 2022 or 2023 at the earliest, and that really we're talking about a transition of 20 to 30 years to get to all AVs on the road if that future really comes to pass. So what we're really trying to figure out are what is the kind of range of future options? How do we prepare for them? And how do we use our policy to get the future that the city of Eugene wants, a livable community with more options and more accessibility for people traveling?
And thank you. And my second question is about the change of the fuel source to the building inventory. Recently, we went from a very inefficient steam system downtown to a more efficient, but mostly natural gas. And so a lot of these buildings downtown have brand-new systems that have 40- to 50-year lives. And I'm wondering, with that coupled with the University of Oregon being the largest section of buildings that heats by natural gas, what are your plans or how the economics of converting those buildings to this alternative source, non-carbon?
Commissioner Brown, in one of the strategies, in what's called our GAPS strategy memo, we looked at and we continue to look at what would be a accelerated program to electrify, and as Frank's talked about, this smart electrification. And so I think what we're trying to understand is like, where do we work in collaboration to identify the most cost-effective? And in the case for downtown buildings that were retrofitted when a steam resource was decommissioned, those are going to have a useful life of 20, 30 years. And so I think from the standpoint of trying to do it in an effective and efficient manner, those would probably not be on the top of the table, especially since most of them were high-efficiency new systems were put on in. So I think that's how our modeling's been, is that anything that gets electrified is really at the end of life, end of useful life of that equipment that's been installed.
Thank you very much.
Counselor Cyret?
Thank you. Well, I don't have any questions. I just had a few comments. I really appreciate the presentations. And I very much appreciated the update on the cap and trade legislation and kind of that high-level overview. I think it's also maybe being referred to as cap and invest because of what you referenced around, you know, taking any of that tax and putting it back into communities that are seeing the greatest impact from climate change and are the least able to respond to it on their own without some assistance. So I really want to appreciate, just in the way, I know these were staff presentations, but I'm assuming they are reflecting the board's policies that I, from this small glimpse, you know, I see EWEB is really viewing the work around addressing climate change as a fundamental piece of your work as you look at in the future and what our community's going to need in terms of providing energy. So that is very encouraging and I really appreciate it. And I also want to appreciate the social equity aspect of the work and really want to encourage you on the piloting program to bring electric vehicles to underserved communities. I think that's, you know, when I think about all those benefits up there and then I think about the cost of a new electric vehicle, you know, it's fairly prohibitive, I'm sure, for many folks in our community. So we do need to look at how we can expand access to that future technology sooner rather than later. So those are my comments. Thank you very much.
Counselor Evans?
Yeah. I want to drill down a little bit further into the, kind of, the equity benefit that you're talking about. What specific examples of an equity benefit would you cite as coming from a result from a cap and trade or a carbon pricing model? Exactly what would that look like for a consumer who's on the lower end of the scale? Are we talking about a reduction in their, in the cost of their energy bill? Or are we talking about other specific kinds of programs like, you know, insulation, other kinds of things that may be of benefit to a customer at that lower end of the scale?
There might be better people at EWEB to answer that question, Counselor, but I'll take a crack at it. Off the top of my head, you know, there are some segments of the housing market, like rentals, that are very difficult to access. There's the split incentive issue that the person who owns the property isn't the person paying the bill. One solution could be carbon revenue could be used, you know, as grant funds to overcome the split incentive issue in the scenario of that type of housing stock that's very difficult to deploy energy efficiency in. And we know there's a number of low-income Oregonians that do live in rentals. So that's the type of market that's been very tough to crack to deploy energy efficiency. I'm not the best person at EWEB to tackle that one, but I gave it a shot, so.
Counselor, I would say that the --
So it's like, it's like a benefit to the property owner, but not necessarily a benefit to the, a direct benefit to the consumer?
No, we don't, because the consumer pays the bill. The home, the property owner doesn't pay the bill. And that's what we call, why we call it the split incentive problem. If there's an improvement to the property, the person paying the bill and the property owner are different people. But in this instance, the resident would still see a reduced bill in that example.
And Counselor Evans, just, the bill is written, will be amended ultimately before it passes or doesn't pass. But as it's written, one of the targeted statements is really around impacted communities. And so that's, and in the definitions within the bill, that includes communities of color, low-income populations, low-income communities and organizations that serve those communities. And so what I would kind of, as I read through it and was thinking through, how would this be implemented? And once again, you got to wait till it gets implemented or passed and then the rules written and everything else. But that there would be funds that would be directed from the tax or the fee revenue that would come into the state, and then the state would redirect those on out to agencies like St. Vincent de Paul that provide services, employment services for low-income individuals and also people coming back into the work, into the job market. And also utilities or other organizations that are providing weatherization services and be able to drop that cost, make it more cost-effective. And also, as Counselor Cyret had talked about, EVs. And so there's, right now, EVs are a great option, but you got to be able to afford an EV. And so really trying to put that money back on into investments in those quote-unquote impacted communities.
Commissioner Mattel?
Thank you. And I want to thank staff on, for both, from both the city and EWEB for organizing. It's a really great opportunity to get together with everybody on this important topic. So I just wanted to get clear on a couple of things, if I have the time to do so. We at EWEB, staff and commissioners alike, have spent some time studying your CRO and your goals and have thought through what our contributions to it can be. And I think we've distilled those down to about five things. And Frank largely covered them already. I'll just re-mention them very quickly. There's an efficiency component, conservation and efficiency. We're making significant investments in the residential and commercial sectors, low-income, high-income, everybody really, to help folks become that much more efficient. And there's obvious emissions advantages there. We talked about, or Frank talked about the smart electrification, and we see that primarily as an opportunity to switch folks from those who can afford it and are interested and for whom's, for whose lifestyles it fits, to switch from internal combustion engines to electric vehicles. So that's the second thing. There's the price of electricity, and our goal is to keep it low and affordable so that people continue to choose it as opposed to the alternatives, which would be, let's say, natural gas to heat their homes. Frank mentioned the peak management issue, and he showed us that the, when we are operating at peak, at 5 o'clock or 6 o'clock in the afternoon on a, you know, on a winter day, the carbon intensity of that electricity goes up by something like nine times because at that point in the day, all the natural gas power plants around the region have to fire up in order to meet the demand. So the carbon intensity goes up dramatically. We're trying to figure out ways to reduce that peak, get people to do the activities that they're doing in their homes at different times of the day so that all that natural gas doesn't have to fire up. And we have a couple other, the last one is just the long-term commitment to low-carbon power. We will have to rewrite, review all of the contracts that we have with Bonneville Power, with a bunch of other folks between now and the next 10 years. And so our goal is to continue those as, to the best that we can at a reasonable price. That's what we can do. The point that I, the thing I wanted to, so we're clear about that. Some of those things would be assisted greatly if we had support from the city. And those are the things I think that we are not yet clear about. We understand what your goals are. I don't think we yet understand what commitments you're willing to make to see those things through. So it would be great to hear about those.
Great. Thank you. Chris?
Thank you. It's a good question, actually. I wanted to kind of get some clarification on the potential for our climate recovery ordinance and our efforts that we're doing around climate recovery, and the potential for this cap and trade legislation, and how those two might be able to work together. And I think what I'm hearing is that we have goals that we've set, and we need to be articulate about them and what the strategies are to get there. But what I'm hearing, what I think I'm hearing is, is if this legislation were to be in place, we wouldn't go, oh, great, here's a cool way to kind of just, you know, not have to do all this uncomfortable stuff, we'll just buy a whole bunch of allowances and call it good. I don't, I don't believe that's what I'm hearing because, one, the allowances decline over time, so you're not going to really wind up in the long run helping yourself. And two, I think we're being sincere about our climate recovery goals and the steps we want to take to get there. So what I think I'm hearing is that if we were to invest in cap and trade allowances, it would be as a gap-filling measure temporarily to buy us time to continue on? Or am I kind of misunderstanding what we're talking about?
Counselor Pryor, there's two items, and I'll try to hopefully be clear in a very complex situation. In regards to the cap and trade bill, it would impact the climate recovery goals substantially for community-wide, because it would be moving our economy statewide and all of the things that are outside of just Eugene's activity and also in Eugene. It would be moving us in the correct, in the right direction. In regards to then what the city of Eugene would be required to report and have allowances for, we would not be, our organization, as Jason had said, the limit is around 25,000 tons, metric tons, per year. Eugene as an entity, the city of Eugene, we emit roughly 16,000 tons per year. So we would not be a regulated entity. And then nor would we, as the city, be required to kind of purchase allowances within the economy. And there's a difference between allowances and offsets. The way that I would think about it is in regard to the way that Counselor Zelenka says, a silver bullet or a silver buckshot? It's not, the cap and trade is not a silver bullet in regards to the way that meeting our climate recovery goals, those that have been established by council. It would be one of a number, and it would be a very substantial action, but it would not fulfill all of the things that would then get us to those council adopted goals.
I guess what I was trying, what I was looking for explicitly was for us to say, we're not going to try to weasel out of trying to accomplish our climate recovery goals by using some external mechanism to just kind of buy our way out of it. We're still committed to doing those. And so cap and trade as an economic tool is a good one, but we're not using it as some excuse to not continue to pursue our climate goals.
Yeah, that would be a council directive, I would say.
Counselor Taylor?
Thank you. And as to the question, what's a city willing to do, I wonder, what can we do? And should we make everyone get up at midnight and do their laundry and their showers? And --
You sound like it's a bad thing, right?
I don't know if it's a bad thing or not. I just wonder, I mean, how can we change people's lives so that they use the utilities at a time when they're more plentiful? And also, if we, well, the big things I hear from constituents right now that they're concerned about, and while we have you here, I'd like to hear something about, some reaction. They're very concerned about natural gas. And if everyone changed, well, if we restricted the future spread of natural gas, could EWEB satisfy the demand for electricity? My next question. Then I want to know more about 5G and whether, I think I heard you say, some one of you say that EWEB has no power over that. The city doesn't have any power, but people are really frightened of 5G. And what's, what about that? What can we do? Is it really spreading everywhere? I just got an email saying it's across from Roosevelt School now. And people think it's dangerous. Is it dangerous? Can anyone do anything about it? All those questions.
Well, I'll address a couple of things. I think the first question had to do with natural gas and the integration of it. Northwest Natural presently is our peaking resource in Eugene. If we were to attempt to integrate that into the electric system, we would essentially double our peak. They supply that amount of energy. That's, that would be very expensive for us. I also think that you would have to start looking at the entire conversion of efficiencies and other things. We have deemed that not to be our first priority relative to some of the other things that we would like to do around transportation. It would be very difficult to incorporate that peak.
So a little more about 5G. So as I mentioned, there was an FCC ruling that went into effect in January. And basically, that ruling gives us very few levers by which to regulate our right-of-way when telecommunication companies come and say, we'd like to put 5G up on one of your light poles or your traffic signal poles. The ruling basically says that we cannot basically deny access to the companies. We can come up with a few things, like aesthetic standards, safety standards, which we have, to determine where the locations are. But we can't basically set standards in a way that would prohibit the network being put in. We also are limited to, I think it's about $270 per year per an installation to charge. So basically, we've lost control of pricing, you know, the right-of-way. So saying, you know, here's a fair market value for being on this pole, we're not allowed to do that unless we can basically prove actual costs. So we are going through an exercise to make sure that with that price, that we are not losing money during the process, because it is actually fairly involved. We make them do a structural analysis of any pole they're going to be put on. They have to do an RF study that they give to us to verify that they're meeting FCC rules. One thing that I'll say is, and I understand this is for installations of, on private property as well as public, we're not actually able to use, as long as they meet the RF study requirements that the radio frequency, I'm sorry, radio frequency study requirements that the FCC has, we're not allowed to basically regulate on top of that as to whether it's safe or not. If they meet those standards, they meet the standards, and the city is not able to have a say in whether that is safe or not. So as to how many have gone in, I'm actually not sure right now. That's something we could get back to you on, how many have been installed?
Well, I know people think they're all over the place, and people think they're dangerous. Is this similar then to cell towers, which we couldn't, we can't consider the medic, whether there is a medical effect?
That's correct. One thing is that they do have much lower radio frequency emissions, so they're much lower power than a large monopole is. The, as it's been presented to us, the theory behind 5G installation to us, the theory behind 5G installations is having, you know, basically a number of low-power installations in areas where they're trying to bring bandwidth up. So the areas that they would typically be targeting would be downtown areas towards the University of Oregon where there's higher data usage on mobile phones, and it allows to get that data-carrying capacity up.
Well, the first question I asked was, what did you want the city to do when you, when you asked Steve Vitale, ask what's a city willing to do? What is it you would like us to do? And I think I'm out of time, but you can answer that question.
Can I answer?
Sure.
Well, at the end of the day, of course, it's up to the city to review its options and make a decision about what those options are. I think the first thing is to get clear about what the options are. There are things you can do within the land use code, within the construction code, that are available to you that would have mostly long-term, but some short-term and medium-term effects on people's habits. I don't think you can or would be very beneficial for you to try and legislate when people do their laundry. But we can send a price signal to folks, and we're investigating that option that credits them for doing their laundry at a certain time of day versus others. So that's probably the better way to handle that thing. The more important thing is figure out how we can work together. We're, like I said, we're, one of our most difficult challenges is to reach out to the low-income folks in the low-income housing sector and get them to sort of understand the options that we're trying to make available to them in terms of efficiency gains and conservation work that they can do within their, within their, within their homes. There's ways that the city and E-Web can partner on that.
Commissioner Spohsman?
So first of all, I want to thank everybody for this work session tonight. I'm actually really excited that we're all together talking about this. I think that the city and E-Web all have things that we're doing to address climate change, and it'd be really great to figure out more ways where we can have value add by all doing it together, so it adds up to something more. When I, I have two questions about reducing consumption. So one is to kind of piggyback on what Steve just said and around housing. So E-Web offers incentives to upgrade your heating systems or to make energy conservation investments. We can't force people to do it. And we know that in the rental sector, that there's a lot of rundown properties that really could use a push in that direction. So I'm wondering, how do we partner with the city so that the city either updates the rental housing code and E-Web continues to offer incentives? Or what are the mechanisms to do that? Because I think that together, we can really tackle that issue in addition to providing economic benefits for lower-income folks who have high energy burden. So that's the first thing. And the second thing is about transportation. So I know that sometimes we want to rely on technology to be a panacea for all of our problems, and electric vehicles seem like one of those things where it's really going to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions. But I'm guessing that the overall strategy isn't just to put more electric cars on the road, but to look at transportation as a whole, and also to reduce car usage by using other modes of transportation. So I would just love, in future talks, if perhaps maybe LTD could be part of this too, because I think that they play a part in the solution as well. And also with the housing, because if we, I know you're working on building more affordable housing, and if we can do that along transit lines as well, that kind of reduces the need for more vehicles.
I don't have any counselors in the queue, so you have a second round, but I was going to let the commissioners maybe, oh, Alan? Okay, go for it.
Go ahead. Very much appreciate the work that you have done, put together this presentation. I was actually watching it, the modern efficiencies that we have and the technology. I was actually watching the webcast as I was stuck on I-5 coming down here, so I heard the presentation on my phone. So I appreciate E-Web's position on all this. I appreciate their position on the, and the board's position on the cap-and-trade bill and where you are and all of the stuff that you're trying to do here. I guess a little, one thing I would add is context for this conversation, especially when we, I always go back to the greenhouse gas inventory pie chart and look at it and say, where are most of our emissions coming from? That's where we should spend our time. When you go back and you do that, you look, you see that the transportation sector is where you get most of your emissions. And so it does make a lot of sense to think about how we would electrify that and decarbonize the transportation system and work on that in a very forthright way. Especially as we get more technology, this stuff will be easier and more effective to do. We've been working on appliance controls for, ever since I started in the electric industry 30, 40 years, 30 years ago. And so we wouldn't, we would, appliances are getting smarter, too. So they can now have little chips in them that can say, when should I turn on? And talk to the utility and say, when's the cheapest time to run the washing machine? And same with car EV charging stations. So I'll do one little update on the information that was presented. The, as of the end of 2016, 2018, we had 22,200 electric vehicles in the state of Oregon. That was 3,000 increased last year, 6,000 this year. So we're on the bottom of that hockey stick that goes like this and then starts to go like that. We've got the incentives, and we're on our way up to that 50,000 goal that the governor has for EVs in the state of Oregon.
Commissioner Helgason?
Well, I too appreciate the opportunity tonight to be hearing a lot of good information, and things for, I think, both of our bodies to consider. We, like you, are on the front end of our consideration of these things and trying to sort of think through and fine-tune the way we approach those four or five key strategies that we can engage as a utility that also contribute to the community's efforts to reduce carbon emissions. I'm particularly interested in the notion of smart electrification. It sounds like there are a number of things in that, like, you know, where we can utilize the renewable energy that we have available certain times of the day and not add to our peak. That sounds smart. I think another attribute to that for me is that, you know, I recall long ago, and there was a reference made here to ceiling cable heat, I think earlier when I was having dinner. There were times when we were heavily promoting electrification in a bygone era that caused us to need ultimately, or to at least profess to need, to build nuclear plants. And so I want to be mindful as we consider how to ramp up certain beneficial uses of electricity, that we don't find ourselves in the long run sort of compromised by that with high resource costs or things that become a problem for us in the long run. And that's why I think it's important, as Mr. Lawson said, to consider the lifecycle costs of this. I think there's another aspect that I don't, I don't want you to take as reticence on my part to look for how to best achieve our role and contribution to what you're trying to accomplish. But I just would want to remind us all that as E-Web is chartered, we have to be able to connect whatever we're doing to a utility purpose. We can't simply just be out there paying incentives to buy carbon. That's, that's not going to fly in terms of our charter and the community. So that's why it's important for us to look for ways to partner with you. And I, again, would cite work in the rental sector as perhaps a place that we could rekindle conversations about energy codes. I know in the, in the mid-'80s, we had on the books some energy codes that had been passed by the council when we were first in the process of ramping up our conservation programs that anticipated the need to lead in with some code provisions to help reinforce those investments in the community. As it turned out, we were successful enough with that program, and they were well enough funded by Bonneville and by E-Web, that we made quite a bit of headway. Now we're kind of at the tail end, particularly in the residential sector, where we're really dealing with kind of the tough nuts, the ones that after 30 years have not, still not converted, even though our incentives have at times been doubled for that sector. So if you can help us figure out ways to reach that group, particularly with cooperation from the landlords, that would be helpful.
I have Counselor Clark waiting for a second queue, but I want to make sure everyone's got a first chance, who hasn't had a first chance. So do we have other, we all get, I guess, all right, okay. Counselor Clark?
Thank you, Mayor. Just two quick questions. Number one, Frank, I think it was you that was mentioning that if we were to, I'm not suggesting we will, I'm not, but if we were to radically limit or stop using natural gas in our community, that it would, did I just hear you say it might double the peak draw for electricity?
Yeah. If you look at the amount of therms delivered by Northwest Natural in our service territory, and recognize that it really happens coincidental to our heating peak already, the conversion of that energy to electricity would, in essence, more than double. If in that process, there's some efficiency improvements, it would, in essence, approximately double our peak load.
So in order to deliver that peak load, what would be the generation capacity, or what would be the generation source?
It depends on when you're talking. I would say if it's, if it's in today's environment, we would go out to the market, and we would buy that on market, which would be what would be considered a Northwest or West Coast mix. That mix is about 26 times more carbon intense than what we have in Eugene on average. So the market would be a West Coast market. If you look at out into the future, so you look at 50 years-
Forgive me for jumping. I was looking to make a specific point. What percentage of that mix is natural gas?
It is probably about 20 to 30%.
So what percentage would be coal?
About 30%.
So at least more than half. If we, if we stop using natural gas in Eugene, then we'd be burning a lot more natural gas and coal in order to get the electricity on peak, during peak times.
In today's environment, yes.
Okay. The second piece is this. I think that what we're seeing is exactly what Alan's talking about, that we're going to see a much larger demand for electric vehicles at a, at a hockey-stick kind of angle. I absolutely agree. And so my question is similar is, won't we, if everybody comes home and plugs those in at 5:00 and 6:00 when they get home, we're going to have a significantly higher peak demand at that time. So what will be the, what will be the cost of electricity or something, what will be the effect of the cap-and-trade legislation's cost for that electricity being used during that peak time?
So there's a couple of unique differences between electrifying a Northwest gas load versus electrification of vehicles. The biggest one there is that with vehicles, you get a certain distribution that isn't all perfectly aligned with your peak. So there's some distribution. And we also have the ability through a number of incentives to move that around. In Juan's presentation, the whole key to that is to be able to move that to times when you can align it with more renewable energy. So electric vehicles and spacing is a much different application, even though if you just did nothing and let it flow all at peak, they would both have similar, similar issues. As far as cost, we generally would make investments in the infrastructure based on that peak. In Eugene, a lot of our infrastructure was built in the '60s and '70s, back when, you know, Back to the Future, because that's when we were talking about electrification of homes, baseboard heat, other sort of inefficient versions. In some parts of Eugene, that means we have a lot of capacity. In other parts, it doesn't mean we have capacity. So it's almost a case-by-case, region-by-region kind of issue if we were to make an investment. And so, while I don't want to say it depends, a lot of the, there's a lot of moving pieces to this, and so the cost would, and both the carbon content would align with that.
And you'd have to pass along the cost to the ratepayer of the cap-and-trade costs that you would have, the, what did you call it? It begins with an A. I forgive me, the allowance costs for some of those generation, some of that power generated by coal and by gas. Is that correct?
It's, it's a little bit of an interest. Again, I think if it simply occurs at peak and we had to go to market, we would go to market at a higher price because of cap-and-trade. The balance to that is that because we get a lot of our power from Bonneville, and Bonneville was a net exporter of already clean energy, there could be a favorable impact on Bonneville rates while we have an unfavorable impact on peak. So how we balance that out is really the key when you look at what E-Web is going to have to do in the next 10 years, and I would call it the synchronizing of supply and demand. It's not a static situation anymore.
Well done. Thank you.
I'd like to just add on to that really briefly is that one of the considerations regarding peak, and this is a very important part for E-Web, is the, you know, being able to have that as part of the discussion. What I would also consider is that peak is only one part of our carbon inventory and our equation. And so what you have to do is you have to amortize that over the entire year and be able to look at, if there are reductions in natural gas use at the, at the household level over the course of time, how does that compare to then when we have to peak and then buy more, and buy natural gas or incorporate those GHGs on a, on a, on kind of a market-based system? So I would, I would want to take a look at like what the entire bucket is, rather than just what those peaking loads are. Because over the course of a year, those peaking loads could be amortized, as I said, and be, and you'd actually see a net reduction across for our inventory, which ultimately is what, we've been identified as.
That's, that's part of the reason that, while it sounds counterintuitive, we do need to add a significant number of renewables. We're talking about in the region, just gigawatts of wind, gigawatts of solar. We have to make many more investments in conservation energy efficiency. Those, those are all really important to us. What's a little bit counterintuitive is that we have to add some natural gas in order to be able to integrate those renewables in an affordable way. Otherwise, we get so out of line from a cost perspective that this, this process of electrification just won't happen from a consumer perspective. Thank you.
I'd like to jump in the queue here. So E-Web, we have a strategic plan that we've been aligning our values and our work towards, and the tenets of that are safe, reliable, responsible, and community-focused. And for us, it's been really key to help us figure out when we are deciding on various plans of action, does it align with this? And for the, the carbon conversation, you know, for me, looking at safe and reliable are intertwined. We have to have reliable power that we serve our community with and make sure that we are, I mean, people need electricity to survive. It gets cold outside, it gets hot outside. You need it to be able to communicate and get through. Responsible, we have to be responsible with our community's funding and with their dollars that we spend. And so looking at options that reduce carbon and, and do it at the lowest cost, regardless of where that carbon may be coming from, is absolutely key. And that's part of why the cap-and-trade sort of program really gets at that. I know there's some conversation about, well, you know, the biggest emitters can just keep emitting. Well, really, it's, it's not the biggest emitters are the ones with the most money. It's, it's looking, that program looks at how much it takes to, if you have a very high cost to reduce, whether or not you're a low or high revenue sort of company, it may be more cost-effective for you to buy a credit and keep emitting and let somebody else who has a lower cost to reduce, let them do that. And overall, you know, for the entire community, we're all in this together. And what this means is looking at all of it together and saying, okay, this is how we can best reduce emissions and have the lowest cost. And so for me, responsible and then being community-focused and looking at ways that we can have a better outcome that is more efficient and more neutral is absolutely key. So I really appreciate this conversation tonight. And I also want to put in my last little bug again, for the efficiency of rental properties, because we don't have control over, or even the housing stock in general, the efficiency of the housing stock. We have to serve that load, but we don't have the ability to impact when it's put in place. And that's absolutely key in the building permit process. So when, when buildings are built, that life of that house may be around for 100 years, and after it's set, it's very difficult to change. So, thank you.
Okay. I have two, maybe three counselors wanting another round. We have three minutes for counselors. So I'm going to give it to Counselor Yeh because she hasn't had a first round, and then hopefully this conversation will continue.
Thank you. I want to clarify something Mike was asking. The way I understood Mike's question was that-
The way I understood Mike's question was that if we stopped using natural gas all at once, how that would affect? Is that how you viewed his question? I want to make sure you, the answer you gave was the question I thought.
I, I think the way I interpret his, interpreted his question was if, specific to home heating or space heating, if natural gas went away for some reason, how much of that, and how would we incorporate that in the electric sector?
So my question is, I don't think we've ever spoken on council about doing that, but we have, there has been some suggestion that what if, what if we stop creating more infrastructure? What if we kind of left our natural gas usage as it is today? And over time, I understand you guys are trying to use more renewables, so how would that, that decision or that policy affect?
I think one of the things that we haven't, I think this is one of those situations where the more we learn, the more questions we have. When we look at these studies and we look at electrification, for example, the studies I mentioned were really very conservative relative to growth in the electric sector. We're talking less than a percent, and included a little bit of electrification. If we start to look at further electrification, and we look at this from a regional level, what impacts do those have? And we start to get into a number of new questions around the trade-offs of technology, and every one of them, including hydro, hydro has people who want to breach dams because of fish reasons. We have impacts of climate change that will potentially reduce the value and the availability of hydro in our system. So it opens up a whole new question. I would say that because of the way that housing stock works, it's a long-term decision. And I don't know specifically how we would incorporate that load going forward. We have pretty modest projections at this point relative to growth, and we would, we would just have to do an analysis on it. It's, it's a tough one to, and it also comes at peak. And so if we can mitigate peaks, that's why we're looking at some of the electrification of vehicles, for example.
Commissioner Mattel?
Thanks. So I just wanted to follow up on, I think, an issue that Counselor Clark brought up first, which is the anticipation of passage of the cap-and-trade bill at the state level and how that might affect what the city of Eugene pursues going forward. You're in the process of updating your climate action plan to 2.0. I think it was started a year ago before we had the, the relative certainty that we now have that that bill will pass, and in a couple of months, we'll, we'll know for certain. In my view, it, it opens up a really important and serious question. Well, there will be significant, the state is going to establish a goal and a mechanism to reduce emissions. And so we can count on some of that happening, including here in Eugene. And, but what, what would be useful is to understand which of your goals will, how much of your goal will have been met via the state mechanism, and where should you re-target, if, if at all? But where should you re-target your efforts going forward? What won't be accomplished by the state that you might want to see accomplished? And what mechanisms do you have available at your disposal to meet them? Those are the questions I'd like to see answered.
Okay. I'm going to, I'm going to close this out because we are at time, and I just want to, I thank, thank everyone for this conversation. And I think just to take Frank Lawson's word, I would hope that going future, going forward, we're looking at synchronization, that we actually are thinking about how our city of Eugene policies and E-Web's policies and strategies work together, also with other partners, LTD and Northwest Natural. And we're looking for a law, the bigger picture, and I'm hoping this is the first of many conversations and, and the first of, you know, of future joint, joint meetings with us. So thank you all very much. And with that, I adjourn the council meeting.
And I adjourn E-Web meeting.